And I'd like to call the school board meeting to order for today's date, which is my grandbaby's birthday, May the 16th. And we're inviting Symphony Ritchie up front to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Bishop Lawrence. Uh-uh Symphony, come back. Where you going? And how are you today?
Good.
You have a beautiful smile.
Thank you.
And where do you go to school honey?
Calton Palmore.
Really? Do you like it there?
Yeah.
What do you like most about Calton Palmore? One thing, one thing.
I don't know.
Maybe your teacher, maybe your teacher? And what grade are you in honey?
Fifth.
Yeah, so where are you gonna be going to middle school next year?
Lakeland Highlands.
Okay, are you excited about that?
Yeah.
Good. A little bit nervous? No, alright. You don't know, okay. So what is your favorite subject honey?
Math.
Math? And what do you want to be when you become an adult?
An OBGYN.
Alright, well that's great. We are so happy that you're here today. We wish you the best and hope you have a great summer. And who did you bring with you today?
My mom, my dad, my brother, my sister.
Well where are they?
Right here.
Well thank you all for bringing her today. Is that your baby sissy?
Yeah.
Oh she's cute. What's her name?
Serenity.
Serenity, beautiful name. Serenity and Symphony. Well thank you for coming. Let's give her another hand please. Alright, the next item on our agenda is to accept the agenda for today's meeting. And I know that we have some revisions, Ms. Byrd.
Yes we do. Item C5, approved minutes of April 11, 2017 work session, replace backup. Item C6, approved minutes of the April 25, 2017 work session, delete item. Item C7, approved minutes of the April 25, 2017 school board meeting, add backup. Item C44, recommendations for non-instructional personnel, replace backup. Item C46, revised job description and title, associate superintendent of operations, replace backup. Item R49, superintendent's contract renewal, add backup. Emergency item E60, Discovery High School Academy's request to increase enrollment, add item and backup.
Wow, that was a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept today's agenda with the revisions that were just read. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And Ms. Jacke Ann, we have special recognition today?
Yes we do. First I'd like to ask Lori Cunningham to step forward for our special recognitions. Next with Camille Blake, President of the Lakeland Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Please come forward for the Delta Sigma Theta recognition.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Camille Blake. I'm the current President of the Lakeland Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And if I could have the members of the Lakeland Alumni Chapter, please stand. Our lovely ladies in red. Yeah, one of our programmatic thrusts of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is educational development. Cause we believe, as you here believe, that our children are our future. And education is one of the paths to open doors in life. And on that note, we have, the chapter has brought a plaque to recognize and honor Mrs. Byrd for all that she does on a daily basis to benefit the Polk County Public School System and its students. And our plaque reads, and if you would come on down, Mrs. Byrd. Presented to Mrs. Jacqueline Byrd, Superintendent Polk County Public Schools, in appreciation of your steadfast commitment to increasing educational opportunities for all students. Presented by the Lakeland Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, May 16, 2017. And just to say thank you so much for all that you do.
Can we get a good picture ladies? Congratulations Ms. Jackie.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Ladies, we want to thank you all for coming today. We want to thank you all for supporting the superintendent in our public schools. We appreciate it very much. Alright, the next item on our agenda would be if there are any speakers who would like to speak on any item that is on today's agenda. Alright, if not, we're moving to approval of minutes for the April 11, 2017 work session.
Move approval of the minutes of the April 11, 2017 work session as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the minutes for the April 11, 2017 work session. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item would be approving the minutes for the April 25, 2017 school board meeting.
Move for approval of the April 27 school board meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the minutes for the April 25, 2017 school board meeting. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item would be approving today's consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for May 16, 2017 as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve today's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And Ms. Jackie, I know we have one new administrator.
That's correct. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Carla Wiggs as Assistant Principal of Lake Gibson Middle. Mrs. Wiggs previously served as Assistant Principal 2 at Lake Gibson Middle. She attended University of South Florida, receiving a Bachelor of Science degree in education, Pacific Learning Disabilities, and a Master's degree in Educational Leadership. I'd like to welcome Ms. Carla Wiggs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't know I was supposed to have a speech, but I just want to say I am so honored and humbled by having the opportunity and being chosen as AP at Lake Gibson Middle School. It is, this is my first year there. I have enjoyed being a part of the Lake Gibson Middle family. Has allowed me to continue to grow and advance in education. The culture there is awesome. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else right now. So thank you for the opportunity and thank you.
And you did an amazing job, not to have known you had to say anything Ms. Carla. I know Ms. Carla personally, she's a fine young lady. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And you brought your dynamite husband with you today.
Yes, I did, and my parents.
Okay, great. Do you want to introduce them please?
Ricky Wiggs is my husband. He is also an Assistant Principal at Lake Gibson High School. And then I have my father Jimmy Johnson and my mother Jacqueline Johnson with me.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Alright, congratulations.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask real quick, is that the Lake Gibson position from Ms. Rottenberg? Anyway, that's us.
Yes.
I don't know what to say about that other than, you know, it's big shoes to fill and thank you for stepping up. But I think it's obviously a terribly sad occasion that caused that. Just wish you the best and congratulations on helping keep the school moving. Thank you.
I think one of the great things is that Ms. Carla was there when all that happened. So she's a part of that family. And she's done quite well. And I know that you will continue. Alright, and keep Pastor Ricky in line, okay? Alright, thank you. Alright, now moving to the regular agenda. The first item on our agenda is to approve Polk State Collegiate High School contract amendment for a 15-year term. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the Polk State Collegiate High School contract amendment to a 15-year term. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Yes Madam Chair, I wish to abstain from voting on this item due to my relationship with Polk State College. The paperwork has been or will be timely filed.
Thank you Mr. Wilson for making us aware of that. Alright, so the motion is on the floor. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to approve the superintendent's contract as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the superintendent's contract as presented. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, Mr. Townsend?
We talked about this this morning and we've talked about it before, but I did just want to note, superintendent made a couple of nice accommodations. One relating to, actually now that I bring it up, I forget which one it was. But it was a nice accommodation. And, but the one I'm bringing up, foregoing a car allowance. She gets out and about a lot, but she's gonna be out and about in one of our very unsexy cars. So, you know, I think those things matter. And just wanted to point it out and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. I just want to say how very truly blessed we are to have such a wonderful lady at our helm. I know that's contract renewal time and, you know, a lot of things are negotiated, but at the end of the day, Mrs. Byrd brings such professionalism, talent, and overall excellent judgment in leading our school district forward. And I'm so happy and proud that she's willing to stay with us and keep the momentum going. I think we're gonna achieve great things under your leadership. So thank you, it's a two-sided street. Thank you for being willing to stay with us and to renew your contract as we've recently just done. So very excited for your blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Cunningham. And we all did owe that. Ms. Jackie?
Thank you all.
Alright, the motion on the floor is to approve the superintendent's contract. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alright, the next item is a nomination for the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Ms. Cunningham?
Yes Madam Chairman, as most of the community may know, we have the opportunity to appoint community members to serve on the district's Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And I'm very pleased to say that I have nominated Mr. Derek Feacher, who a lot of you may know used to be the city manager in Winter Haven and is now Assistant City Manager for the city of Haynes City. And I think he will do a wonderful job serving our community. And as we move forward with the sales tax referendum, I think he'll be a great spokesperson for our whole county. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the nomination of Derek Feacher to the Sales Tax Oversight Committee.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second that we approve the nomination of Derek Feacher to the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item is to approve the emergency authorization for the superintendent to approve contracts, bed awards, and other financial documents as needed between school board meetings during the 2017-2018 school year.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve emergency authorization for the superintendent to do all the things I just read. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item is to approve the Resolution 2016-2017-06 Hurricane Tropical Storm Emergency Fuel Purchase.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve Resolution 2016/2017-06. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item is to approve Resolution 2016-2017-07, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a second amended and restated lease schedule number 1999A to a master lease agreement, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a Series 2017A supplemental trust agreement with U.S. Bank National Association as trustee.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve Resolution 2016/2017-07. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alright, now we go to recessing the school board meeting. And we will now be going into the financing corporation. And we are gonna be approving a Resolution 2016/2017-08.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve Resolution 2016/2017-08. Is there any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Again, this is something we discussed earlier, but for the benefit of the folks who didn't see it, this is a, sort of a refinancing of bonds that's gonna save us up to $900,000 over six or seven years. I think it's 17 through 24, is that right? So, pretty routine, but good news. So just wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that.
Thank you. All those in favor, this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item is to approve the Florida Virtual School Agreement in the amount of $825,000.
Gotta adjourn the finance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Going back, I will adjourn the corporation meeting and go back to the regular school board meeting. Thank you. Alright, the next item is to approve the Florida Virtual School Agreement in the amount of $825,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the Florida Virtual School Agreement in the amount of $825,000. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item is to approve the K-12 LLC contract renewal in the amount of $594,500.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the K-12 LLC contract renewal in the amount of $594,500. Is there any discussion on this item? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alright. The next item is the Polk Charter Academy Request for Application Reconsideration. And the recommendation is to uphold the superintendent's recommendation of denial to Polk Charter Academy's request to reconsider their application with the revised cover page.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation to deny Polk Charter Academy Request for an Application Reconsideration. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, again, I don't know if Wes wants to walk us briefly through the facts of this again for the benefit of anybody watching on TV. If not, I have some things to say.
Sure, I'd be delighted. This is a, this is a school, an application that was received in 2016 and was denied by the school board. It was presented as a high-performing application, but the applicant that presented the application did not have any high-performing charter schools. That issue is currently on appeal. They have since that time submitted a one-page revision changing to the name of an entity that does have a high-performing charter school. Pursuant to state law, school boards are not required to consider applications submitted after August 1st. And to the extent this is an application submitted after August 1st, it would be late. State law does require that you consider applications submitted prior to August 1st, which your policy allows, so long as they are submitted no longer than the first business day in July. If that is the case, then it would be early. In any event, because it is presented as a high-performing application and the statute defaults to approval if you do not take action within 60 days, the recommendation is that you authorize your staff to send an appropriate denial letter that recites those facts for them. We, it is reasonable to expect that they may submit an additional application or there may be other legal action. But that is, that is the position in which you find yourselves this evening. And we'll be happy to write that letter and send it on your behalf.
Thank you Mr. Bridges. Ms. Sellers, if you have something else?
Yeah, I was just gonna, but you can go first.
No, you can call her and then Ms. Sellers can come up to you.
Yeah, I was just gonna sort of, to put it in less lawyerly terms, this is a charter of school that no one wants. It's trying to solve a problem that does not exist. The previous board voted against it. If we had the chance to vote against it, I guess we are voting against it now. But the, your Tallahassee Board of Education, your Tallahassee legislators are jamming this down our throats. They're, one of the great problems when we talk about charter and choice schools is that the definition underneath charter and choice is way too big for the word. Our current charter schools in town, this is a very, very different model. It's not a conversion. It's going into South Lakeland to try to find the most demographically appealing kids it can find and to make money off of them. It's, the chairman of its board works for something called the Profitable Group, literally. And it has a state legislator, James Grant, on his board as well. I have taken to calling the legislature's proposal, schools of hope, schools of fraud. And I think this is a school of fraud, moral fraud. You know, I'm not accusing them of legal fraud, I'm accusing them of moral fraud. I know that various folks for us have requested that they open in the Northeast where we might actually have some use for them, but that's not what they want. They don't want those kids. They want kids who are gonna pay. And, I mean, who are going to be profitable for them. That's what we're fighting right now in Tallahassee. And that's why, you know, you hear me going all out. That's why I'm doing, owning it. So I just wanted to draw the distinction between this kind of charter school, which is something new for Polk County, and the existing ones that, you know, we need to build partnerships with and work more closely with and work collaboratively. These people have no interest in collaborating with us. So, thanks.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes, I'll be voting to uphold the superintendent's recommendation for denial. This charter company has asked for a revision. They've added something in the middle of the year. And I will say, since I've been on this board, we have never allowed past the due date to have anybody revise their charter application, add anything to it. It's very difficult. We would be in the charter business all year round. We have limited staff. And so I'm voting for denial tonight based on the fact that we do not allow exceptions for amendments, additions, subtractions, anything during the year. We have very definite date deadlines and we've always upheld those. It would not be fair to the many charters that came before this that have asked for those kinds of exceptions. And as far as I know, we've never permitted one. So I'll be voting to uphold the superintendent's recommendation this evening.
Thank you. I see Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. And just to expand a little bit on what Mr. Townsend said, district staff did effectively offer an opportunity for these folks to bring their school to the Northeast part of the county where we desperately need some help. The fact that they refused to take advantage of that opportunity, I think is quite telling. Unfortunately, our only option is to address it from a legal technicality, but we're at least doing that. Thank you Madam Chair.
You're welcome. The motion on the floor is to deny Polk Charter Academy's request to an application reconsideration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item is to increase the student enrollment at Discovery High School Academy by 70.
Move approval, Madam Chair?
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the increase of student enrollment at Discovery High School Academy by 70. Mr. Harris?
Once again, I'd like to go on record as indicating that the community has already spent tax dollars to accommodate these students. We have empty seats on the north end of the county and this school does not need to exist. This expansion of this school does not need to exist. The taxpayers have already built and paid for seats for these students. This is another indication of what Mr. Wilson just got through describing of a charter school wanting to be in the location it wants to be and not where we really need them to be. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to grant Discovery High School Academy to increase their student enrollment by 70. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one nay and six yays. Motion carries. Alright, now we will hear from our superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Board members and community, I wanted to bring an update to you that we had a case with the student, the bus driver and the student. The parents came to tell us that the bus driver had made some accusations to the child about heaven or hell. I wanted to bring the update of, as we stated we would, that there was an investigation that concluded from the Human Resources Division on March 1st. The Human Resources reviewed the videotape from the bus of the conversation between the student and the bus driver. Mrs. Jacobo, it was determined that the video that was shown that was on the bus, there was no evidence to support the allegation that the bus driver told the student that he and his two moms are going to heaven, going to hell. Furthermore, the bus driver, Ms. Jacobo, did not ever state or mention the word heaven or hell to the student. After reviewing the video, we invited the parent in, Ms. Encartian, the student's mother, where she came with her attorney and viewed the video recording and noticed that there was never a mention of heaven or hell. At that time, because it's an educational record, we did ask the parent if we were, she would give us authorization to release the video and that was denied. Based on the investigation, Human Resources determined that Ms. Jacobo did violate the school board policy where she provided some religious literature and engaged in a conversation with the student. At that time, Ms. Jacobo, the driver, has now received disciplinary action for that. Displaying, I mean, I'm sorry, distributing the literature and engaging in the conversation with the student. And that's the investigation from that incident. I wanted to make sure that we update the public as well as the board. Also, as a reminder, there will be a work session on June 13, 2017 at 12:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room. room, followed by a school board meeting at 5:00 PM in the auditorium. Both meetings will take place at 1915 South Floor Avenue, Bartow, Florida. My last comment, I want to thank all the teachers, staff, and all of our employees for a very good year that we've had this year. We'll be entering to graduations actually starting on the 18th, and it's gonna be very busy. But to all our seniors, want to say congratulations to each of them as we have been displaying some of their announcements where they have been selected to go, whether it's off to college or whether it's into the workforce. So, congratulations to all of our students and all of our employees. Thank you for a great year.
Thank you, Ms. Jackie. And thank you for that update. All right, and now, Mr. Bridges, did you have anything?
Madam Chair, no report, but if it would be convenient to sign those two resolutions this evening, we'll go ahead and get those transmitted to our bond counsel tomorrow so they can start watching the market.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that?
Yes, ma'am.
And board members report. Let's start with Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, I guess I'll have to push button. One sort of amusing note, I guess. I got an odd gift in the mail today, or in the school mail today. A Mr. Goldstein out there is concerned that there have been times that I have not worn a tie at the school awards, so he sent me a tie. It appeared to have a bit of a smudge on it, but as you can see, I was wearing this tie before he sent that to me. So, I will endeavor to do more tie wearing. But I guess it's just a reminder that people are looking at us, which is important. I cannot always promise that I will wear a tie. I'm a modern guy that way. But if I have, if I have one I like, maybe I'll throw, oh, hold on. And just on a serious note, I guess this is our last meeting before the end of the year, but before the end of the school year, right? So, I want to send my personal thanks, really to everybody who soldiered through a pretty difficult year this year, but particularly to the folks at our top middle schools, our turnaround middle schools, who I think really fought through conditions that pushed the human ability to function in. You know, I think the pressures they were put under, the unconscionable treatment over the summer, for everybody who stayed and fought through it and served those kids, for the, for all those folks, you have my heartfelt thanks. And I'm gonna give everything I can to try to make it a little better for you next year and a little better for you the year after that. You deserve better. Those kids deserve better, and that's why we're fighting for community education.
Ms. Sellers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very busy time of year, and this past week I was privileged to see two plays, Peter Pan at McLaughlin Middle and Aladdin at Davenport School of the Arts. And while the students did an awesome job, I just have to thank the staff, the principals, for all of the hard work. These performances take hours and hours of preparation, not all during the school day, just the making of the sets. And for McLaughlin, who had to use their cafeteria, that's a lot of extra work for probably custodians, parents, teachers, principals, administrators. I want to thank you because the kids were able to reach their potential because of all the hard work the teachers and staff do for our kids. I also went to the Polk Museum Elementary Showcase. It wasn't, I called it Polk Museum, and it wasn't because it was at Harrison this year. Dr. Ward graciously opened up his school on Saturday because the elementary showcase has actually outgrown Polk Museum, and the gallery, the elementary gallery is on display at Harrison now. Once again, lots of work by the art teachers, lots of work by Dr. Ward. He was there. The school was opened. Extra work for the school. And everybody did it with such graciousness and couldn't have been happier. And I just want to thank, once again, the teachers, the staff, custodians, everybody that works so that our kids can reach their potential. And I do want to thank Interact Alliance. They had several red ribbon rallies, two last week and one today. Sarah Beth and I attended the one in Winter Haven before we started our meetings today. And I really believe it makes a difference when those students hear from lots of adults, police officers, deputies. It gives them the strength to be strong next year when they are introduced or they are tempted to make decisions that aren't wise. They certainly have been given lots of information and lots of encouragement to stay strong. So, thank you for our communities. Bartow Community also had a just say no rally last week. Thank you to our communities who are supporting us with our students. This is a very, very crucial part of schooling because when students do choose to experiment with drugs or alcohol or tobacco, any of those substances, it severely limits what they're able to do. It closes many doors for them, and it even destroys families. So, thank you to our community organizations that really partner with us for that. And I wish our staff, I too, know what a difficult time we have. Sometimes I'm very disappointed with the legislative decisions this year, both budget and law bills. But thank you for the community for standing behind us. I continue to urge the community to get involved with what's happening with public education at the state and local levels. And just have a great summer. This will be our last meeting, so get rested. We look forward to a better year next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We all attended, two weeks ago, the lunch for our homeless seniors, which was probably one of the most inspiring events that I've been to as a school board member. Each of those seniors were gifted with a laptop and goodie bags of treats and snacks and all of these things. But it was so incredible going around and talking to them that they all have a plan of, I'm gonna work for two more years and that way I can start paying for college, or I'm gonna, you know, I'm going to a two-year school and then I'm doing this. I've got scholarships. I'm going to this career academy. I'm enrolling in the military. That it was really incredible to see that all of these students have a plan and know where they're going. And that is, I think, in huge thanks to our teachers and guidance counselors that have really worked with those students and are making sure that they're staying on track even after graduation. Also, two weeks ago was the ITV Awards, which, as a Polk County ITV alum, is something that's always very close to my heart. They're essentially the Grammys for Polk County. If you've never been, it's really cool to watch all of these kids. I mean, the dresses they wear to this event are very similar, I think, to what they wear to any of the Academy Awards. But these students do a great job at producing new media and making sure that their videos are relevant, not just to, you know, this is something fun we can produce, but they have so many categories that are specifically encouraging students to read or to get involved with this math club that it's really a great way for the students to motivate each other academically as well. Lastly, I went to see Sound of Music at Rochelle School of the Arts two weeks ago. And to echo what Ms. Sellers was saying, Mrs. Hewitt over there was crazy enough to double cast all of the Von Trapp children. So, if any of you have seen Sound of Music with the seven Von Trapp children, imagine having fourteen Von Trapp children while you're directing and casting, that she essentially directed the entire show twice, which was an awesome experience for all of the students involved, that that many kids were able to participate. And that truly is a testament to those teachers over there that were willing to do their job above and beyond twice. So, thank you to those teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank Superintendent Bird for accepting the contract we offered and continuing on as our superintendent. You know, it must be difficult reporting to seven people. It's difficult enough having one boss. So, I know it must be challenging having seven people to report to, and you've handled it gracefully. And we're very fortunate to have you here. So, I look forward to a continued exceptional working relationship as we work through some very difficult times. During the work session today, we talked about the budget. And based on what we believe is coming from the state, as it happens, it was necessary to cut district expenditures at the district level by three percent without affecting anything in the classroom. So, there was some previous discussion about cutting some positions, some pair of positions specifically, through attrition, I should add. We were able to avoid that. It was, in my opinion, a tough discussion, a difficult discussion, but we found a way to get through that. So, unless the legislature comes back with an even dimmer or worse budget than it appears they will offer or provide for us, we were able to ensure that we were not impacting the classroom, and I think that's exceptionally important. We're gonna have some challenges moving forward, but I'm very pleased and grateful that we have Superintendent Bird here to lead us through those difficult times. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Harris?
I just wanted to bring to your attention, the superintendent had mentioned the beginning of graduation season. And if you have not attended the graduation ceremony for our three ESE centers, Doris Sanders, Jeanne Odell, and Karen Siegel Academies, I would encourage you and invite you this Thursday night to join all your board members at Tannerock High School to see the graduation ceremony at those, for those three schools. It is a heart-touching, heart-rendering event every year. I've never missed that event since I've been on the board. It is one of those events that you are thankful for your life and for your family. And I encourage all of you, if you have an opportunity Thursday night, to join us at seven o'clock at Tannerock High School for those graduation ceremonies. Typically, it's a very small crowd of students who graduate, but you will certainly, I think, be encouraged by that. Also, I'd like to encourage you, if you are so inclined, to reach out to the governor. We have House Bill 6079 and the state budget that we are seeking a veto of. Both of those because of its dramatic impact on schools throughout the state of Florida, and especially here in Polk County. Our district cost differential, because of the cost of living here in Polk County, really impacts us in a negative way. Last year, we lost $10 per student. This year, we're scheduled to lose another $8 per student. Meanwhile, we're growing by several thousand students. It is difficult to continue to offer the same level of service when you have a reduced amount of funds coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris. And I was, that was gonna be my statement tonight. This morning, Mr. Townsend and I were both at the legislative wrap-up for the Lakeland Chamber. And I would have to say I was very disappointed in what I heard and that the majority of the legislators that were present really think that we, that they had a successful session. And passing the education-conforming bill, 7069, some of the stuff in there might be good. There probably are some things that's good, but there's a whole lot of stuff that's not good for our students and for our school district. And so, I'm hoping and praying that the governor will veto, veto the bill and the budget and send them back to Tallahassee to see what can be done to make it good for all students. The school of hope, the whole, the whole thing really needs to be revisited. So, we just need to make sure that we're sending a message to the governor. That's what we expect. And you only have a few days. I think he has a couple more days before he has to make a decision. I don't know the exact date, but I know it's very urgent that we act now so that he can hear from us. And if you need any help with that, I'm sure Ms. Bird and the staff can direct you to what needs to happen as far as sending information to the governor. All right, and the other thing I want to say is, everyone has said a lot of good stuff today from the board. And I just want to thank all the staff. I want to thank the school-based staff. I want to thank the district office staff. I want to thank our leadership team because it's been a rough year. But through it all, you guys have been steadfast. You've been unmovable. And I know sometimes you have wanted to give up, but I'm so happy that you have not. And we just can't thank you enough. And we look forward for the next school year. And I'm believing that the best is yet to come. With that said, we now will allow anyone that would like to come up to have comments. You have three minutes if you come up. I don't think anybody signed up. We have, okay.
Marianne Capazella, President of the Polk Education Association. And I'm gonna try to talk fast because I have several things to cover. What you're being handed now is the survey on class wallet that we concluded at the, right before the, we went out on winter break. Because we gave you all of the comments that came along with the survey, you'll notice there's an executive summary at the top for you to understand what the biggest concerns were. Certainly today at your work session, when you decided to move forward with class wallet for another year, you took care of one of those things, which was taking away the dollar to be able to enter receipts. And the fact that we are going to continue to allow teachers to do local buying. But there are concerns about product availability, the cost of delivery. Delivery's not being handled appropriately. I'm not gonna read it to you, so if you'll go ahead and look, because we will stand with you to try to make sure that this rolls out better in the future. But there are a number of concerns that need to be addressed as, if, and as we move forward with class wallet. So, your teachers were very frustrated with this particular program this year. I would like to take a minute. When we heard, started to hear the pairs panicking about the number of people who were displaced this year, I got on the phone and talked to a few school board members very quickly, and they talked to the superintendent very quickly. And we were able to get out from the superintendent a communication to make people understand that they are going to stay where they are for next year and that the board was going to work forward to figure out how to resolve this issue long-term. And it's important. If you understand, we have about 17,000 ESE students. About 1,200 of them are what we would consider to the disabled, differently-abled, cognitive, behavioral issues. And we have about 1,200 pairs. And in those 1,200 pairs, there are pairs that don't just work primarily in the classroom like clinic and that and whatnot. And so, there are very few pairs doing the work with some of our most challenged students. And so, they are a vital part of a teacher's success because the instructional and non-instructional duties they do free up the teachers to teach. And so, this is something that we have to talk about as we move forward. But we thank the superintendent for moving quickly on that issue. And then, in my last 30 seconds, I called the superintendent last week and asked her to do a joint press conference on our concerns about next year's budget. And she agreed, and we're doing that tomorrow. And I call on all the teachers and everybody who's listening to this meeting to do just what Mr. Harris said, and that's get hold of the governor. Let him know that his veto is important to us, important to public schools, and important to our students. It is imperative that we try to get something different than what the legislature puts forward. That's it.
Marianne, can you make sure that the staff, that the appropriate staff get copies of that?
I can.
Survey?
I can.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next person is Sarah Fortney.
Sarah Fortney, proud science teacher at Stan Ball Middle School. We've done Kim cars all day, so I smell like vinegar and baking soda. Superintendent Bird, congratulations for your contract. And also, a thank you for the proactive letter in the ledger. And please- And please, keep it coming. I've done my part. I have the number memorized, and anybody I talk to, I hand it right to them. Because I said it the first time I spoke to y'all, we are in this together. And, you know, I don't know what else we could possibly do except maybe get on a bus and just rally up there. But I looked at the statistics, and it was in an article somebody put on Facebook, can't remember who, but it said that Governor Scott was listening and that the, I think it was 1,700 and something emails that were left, voicemails, it was voicemails, negative on the budget, wants him to veto it. So they are tabulating. And that's what I'm trying to get everybody to, you know, anybody, parents, you know, I'm like, hey, here we go, anybody. But I do want to thank y'all for putting up with me. And I do want you to know that most of us do appreciate all you do. And I know it's a hard job, but somebody's got to do it, and we appreciate it. But we all are in it together, and I can tell you this. I'm hoping that the Stan Ball School grade does not put us in a different situation, especially with the new rezoning coming next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the things that I failed to say, and I need to make sure that I say that, is that when we talked about the Education Conforming Bill and about the legislators, we did have one legislator, House Rep. Denise Grimsley, did not vote in support of that bill. So we want to make sure that everyone knows that. And if you have an opportunity, please thank her because she understands the value of not being in support of that bill. Cassie Gibson, please.
Hi, Cassie Gibson, Haynes City High School. As we start, well, just about start, our summer vacation, I would like to say that this has been a very frustrating year for you, for me, for all of us. And I hope that we all have realized that we are in it together, and we need to figure it out together. I know you realize that, but I know that you also must realize that we really need to put our money where our mouth is, no pun intended here, and truly come up with viable solutions for going forward in this next school year. The frustration level is beyond anything I have ever seen, and I have been in this county since 2002. But I am going to step back, and I'm going to get ready for my vacation, and I only have three weeks of professional development that I have done on my own, as I do. This is the least amount I've ever done, and I think it's because I'm exhausted. So have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Millhorn, Larry Millhorn.
Good evening. Larry Millhorn, President of ASME. I want to congratulate you too, Ms. Bird, on getting your new contract. I think we need stability in this county, and you staying here and working with us, I think that will bring stability to us. But one thing I wanted to talk to you all about tonight. I know the state legislature and the budget all is really important, but the frustration that the employees are feeling right now, I've been with this district 20 years. I've been president of ASME for the past six. And I can tell you right now, I am getting more discipline letters with suspensions than I've ever, have ever received. I've got a lot of people that are getting time off without pay, and I don't really believe that these are bad employees. I believe a lot of this is the frustration of what's occurred this year. These employees are tired. These employees are having trouble making a living. And I know it's not all your fault. I know the state legislature has a big part in this because when they start cutting and cutting and cutting, that hurts everybody. And the bad thing about it is our students are being hurt the most. Because whenever we have discipline letters going out, employees being disciplined, and then when we have employees, especially at this time of year, I've got bus drivers to get a five-day suspension at this time of year. That's not good. We have trouble enough getting our kids to and from school because we're shorthanded already. And like I said, I know it's not all your fault, and I have told people, "You need to get in touch with the governor." I have put the word out, and I've told them that you need to make sure that the budget is, if nothing else, is looked at again and that we get support here. Because I believe that the frustration when people go home and they have trouble putting food on the table, paying an electric bill because costs go up and wages haven't gone up. And I just, like I said, I've never seen as much as I've had this year. I mean, I've got stacks and stacks of them. If I don't, I hate to see my mail at work because whenever I get mail, there's only one thing in it, and that's discipline. And then when I look at my emails, it's filled with them. And I just would like, you know, we need to do something for these employees. We need to help them. We need to show them that we really care. And if we can't do it through the pocketbook, we need to find other ways to show them. And that's all I wanted to bring to your attention, that I've never seen it like this before. Thank you.
Thank you. Bishop Metzey.
Good evening to everybody. Glad to be here. I think this is the last, our last meeting this, at this time. Is this the last meeting? We don't have another one? This the last board meeting? Excuse me?
Just for this school year.
Last one for this school year, all right. I was just thinking, and I want to say I do appreciate Board for being so kind to recognize that we do have God's gift to us from Jacksonville to come and be our superintendent. I believe that the Lord sent her here. And she has the heart. I talk with her from time to time, and she has the heart of all of our children. And she has the heart of all of her staff, I mean, all of the teachers and everybody that... She's not just concerned about a portion of the county or part of, you know, certain people, but her heart is for Polk County schools. And I really appreciate you all for recognizing that and seeing that this was a necessary thing to do, to offer her the contract that you offered her. But my thing to all of us in the, I just hear the teachers saying, "We in it together," and I'm with you, I'm with you. I really think that we gotta get a hold of our legislators. Y'all are saying, "Let's call Governor Scott." Yeah, let's call him, let's call him because he's got the power to veto. But our legislators, y'all said this morning, y'all met with them and they told you they had a successful year, but they must be, don't know where they at. They must be or not from Polk County. And I would like to look them on the eyeball and say, "Ma'am, sir, do you know what you're saying? Or do you really care what you're saying?" Because our children, 100-plus thousand children in this district, and they gonna cut the money and say it don't need to be here. Something got to be wrong. And we need to call town hall meetings in Polk County. Call them, we need to get them. I told Mary Ann last time I was here, "We need to get them." We need to tell them, "We demand that y'all meet us." Now, we see it on television, they can walk out and do what they want to do, but that will send a message to our constituents in this county that they don't care or they do care. They don't want to listen to what we have to say. It's our children that are hurting, and we need to take a stand. We got to go through to get to, but we got to take a stand. And I appreciate everybody for seeing the importance of what we have, but we got to take this thing together and stand up to these men and women that was voted to go to Tallahassee and represent. Now, they know that they are not doing what is right because when you tell me, Mr. Harris said $8, you know, $10, well, where you gonna get the money? How you gonna support it? It can't work without money, and our teachers are hurting. People don't need to lose their job. If they give their time, they really need to be paid compensation, I think. But we need to take a stand, and I'm with you. Look on our behalf, we got to do something better. Thank you.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.